Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, if you would call the roll.
I would be happy to, President. This is for the meeting on June 12th. Counselor Wallace.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Present.
Wonderful. Counselor Khan is not here at present. Counselor Lane.
Side here.
Thank you. Counselor McCauley.
Present.
Counselor Preston.
Yes. Here. Yes was not the right answer.
It's fine.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
And Counselor Shan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right. Late files.
The councils will see in the packet if they reloaded the packet and on your, not on your desk because there's too much paper. There are two late files. There's a Communication 492, which is a letter from the abutter to Port Vida. That's to go to Public Works and Safety. Order 470, which came in from Andy Portman Planning Office, which is with respect to Market Landing Park, the gap funding for construction. That's to go to Planning and Development and Committee the whole to be confirmed. And those are the two late files.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
All right. Before we do that, Planning and Development, should it be ad hoc for Market Landing Park? We're going to discuss that once we bring it in.
Okay. It should go to at the ad hoc committee.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Instead of Planning and Development?
Yes.
Okay. And Committee the whole?
Yes, please.
Okay. Got it.
All right. Roll call on accepting the late file items.
This is the roll call. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments. So I see two Zoom hands already up. I see Rick Tainter and Owen Smith. For anyone else on Zoom who wants to speak, please raise your hands. Once Clerk Jones gets back to the di- to the dais, the Zoom hands will be finalized. So I see Rick and I see Owen. Any others, please raise your hand now. I see Zach Comtoys. All right. Those are the three from Zoom call. So first is Rick Tainter. I will allow you to speak. Name, address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. Rick Tainter, 10 Dexter Street, and President of Newburyport Livable Streets. I am speaking tonight about Orders 454 and Order 458, two measures that support safer streets for Newburyport pedestrians and bicyclists. Order 454 approves the construction of a light lane on the short section of Story Ave. In March, Newburyport Livable Streets wrote to NASDAQ requesting that the section of Story Ave between Keller Drive and the Three Roads intersection be restripped to provide safer conditions for cyclists. NASDAQ quickly responded that they would implement this request this spring. NASDAQ ultimately designed a formal light lane on the eastbound side of Story Ave, but will not construct a light lane within the stadium portion of the road unless the lane is also extended within the city's portion of Story Ave and High Street. This order is to approve the installation of a light lane in the city's right-of-way so that NASDAQ can help improve safety in one of our busiest commercial streets. Order 458 requests funding for design of pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements on Hale Street. A lack of safer accommodations for walkers and cyclists on Hale Street is a concern that goes back more than a decade. Three years ago, Newburyport Livable Streets facilitated a Canadian meeting on the issue, and it looked as though some action would be taken, but then the COVID pandemic intervened, and the city had to pivot to other priorities. This past January, the city issued a request for proposals. For preliminary design of bike ped accommodations on Hale Street, three consultants submitted proposals and two were given again in March. However, the mayor decided at that time not to fund the project due to competing large capital projects, including a central waterfront park extension, part of the power renovation, and West End Fire Station. This order requests the administration of $130,000 for Hale Street Design Services, which will allow the city to select one of the consulting teams and move ahead with this supporting project. I hope that the council will vote to support both of these orders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tainter. All right. Next is Owen Smith. I believe you're allowed to speak.
Yes. Good evening, Council President and City Councilors. My name is Owen Smith, and I live at 175 Story Ave, and I'm a concerned resident. According to tonight's City Council agenda, the non-491 will be referred to the Public Works and Safety Committee. I ask that the City Council consider referring this matter to the General Government Committee. Although the activities of the office of the year were may fall under the previous Public Works and Safety Committee, I do believe that the current is one example of many that we need more oversight of executive branch activities. Having internal processes in place to ensure that the city is always excellent on the bill for good government is an issue that I believe is more appropriate to be deliberated in the General Government Committee. I believe when more holistic programs are best to get this affirmed, would lead to more beneficial change. The City Council, the Mayor's Office, and others all play a role in determining that this happens, and we can all work together to compare best practices elsewhere in industry and government and try to become a better community. I look forward to having this part of the discussion, and I did defer to the committee, and thank you for considering it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And last on Zoom is Zach Comtoys.
Evening, City Councilors. My name is Zach Comtoys, and I'm speaking on behalf of my wife and myself. We, 32 Water Street, we own a condo in the building, and we wanted to speak to the letter of concern that we sent with regard to the outdoor dining at Port Vida due to their application for outdoor dining in their parking lot. And I want to reach out on behalf of the two of us and a few other concerned members of our building who weren't able to make it tonight to object to the outdoor dining.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Comtoys. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
That's all right.
All right. So that's it for Zoom. In Council chambers, we have Nicholas Metcalf.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson. I'll be brief. My name is Nicholas Metcalf. I live at 27 Ferrer Street. I've been involved with the waterfront for 35 years. Some people have fought it longer. We are definitely looking forward to a park. The reason I'm speaking tonight is I understand there's a vote coming on the funding for the waterfront. And as I said before, when we used to take signatures down there, well over half the people on the waterfront in the summer are not from Newburyport or West Newbury or New- outside. It's a great magnet, economic magnet, as well as being a place of recreation. I'd just like to urge all of you, if you could please vote in favor of the funding of the waterfront tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. Next is Bonnie Sontag.
Bonnie Sontag, 21 Smith Street. I'm here as a member of Newburyport Livable Streets. You've already heard from Rick Tainter about the details, so I'll simply ask you to please support the extension of the bicycle lane on Story Ave. And for Hale Street, please seriously consider taking advantage of the consultant submissions so far to the RFP, just for conceptual and planning purposes for improving Hale Street. We've already got them. It'd be a shame to waste them, and it's $130,000. I know that's not cheap change. It is only the beginning of a process, and we will learn an incredible amount from this work if you can find in your analyses of the numbers to put this money forward at this time, and then we'll know more about what we need to do in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And last is Ben Iakona.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Iakona, 4 Hallacy Drive. I'm here to express my support for your favorable consideration for Orders 458 and 454. I am also a member of the Newburyport Livable Streets, and specifically, the Hale Street project has been on our radar in our list of important projects for a number of years. We've had public meetings, and we have very favorable response for having that project at least started. And we recognize that it's an investment, and it's probably not a timely investment, but at least the conversation should be started for how that project can be analyzed, designed, and a firm number put together. It's a very important project for the west end of Newburyport, and with all of the activities around the school, the high school, the middle school, and the youth services, having access from that area of the city would be very important and very safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iakona. All right. That is it for public comment. Mayor's comment.
How's everyone doing? Everyone good? All right. It's great. We had a lot of great things going on this past week. We had the great Flag Day 5K go on this past weekend. We had the firefighter memorial on Sunday at Page Headquarters. It was really just an absolutely beautiful day that, as you know, is the second Sunday in June, each and every year, where we honor our fallen firefighters. I think Chief Bradbury did a great job putting the program together. As you know, we marched down to Oak Hill Cemetery. We had a great little presentation there, ceremony. We actually had someone, ashes get buried there this year. There's now two people buried at that firefighter memorial. And then we marched back up, and we thought it was a great opportunity to swear in our new fire chief. So first, I want to thank Clerk Jones and Counsel Cameron, Counsel President Shan and Counsel McCauley for taking time out of the Sunday for being there. That meant a lot to everybody there. And I also want to congratulate, along with Chief Bradbury, firefighters Casey David, James Johnson, Brian Palladaro, Max Baco, and Connor Clancy for getting sworn in. Some of them had been many years since they should have been sworn in, so it was great that we were able to do that. One of the things I'm excited to talk to you about tonight, you won't find in your packet, but it's something that we're going to be doing here at City Hall. This is a new tool that we're going to be using to kind of get resident input on city decisions, so we're going to be testing a civic engagement tool called FlashVote. This uses scientific surveys to gauge resident support for different policies and ideas. Flashvotes will send survey questions that have been designed by the city to no more than once a month that will help city officials decide how to best use resources and address priorities. And this came about, my chief of staff, Andrew Levine, had used this in another municipality, and it's just another way to kind of gauge interest for people who can't get to meetings, who can't take part of that process. This is a really easy way. You can do it on your phone or your computer, and it's really just giving us some great polling data. So we're going to be rolling this out over the next couple of weeks. For residents, sign up takes less than a minute, and your input is always kept anonymous. Personal and demographic information collected by FlashVote is never shared with the city or anyone else. When residents sign up, they can determine how their surveys are received, and we just talked about that, email, text, phone. And once the survey is closed, everyone who participated will automatically get a summary of the results. So we are encouraging everyone to sign up. We're going to have information on our website, and we're going to be setting up different information sessions for residents to learn a little bit more about it, but you can go to www-flashvote.com/newburyport. And there's also a phone number, and I'm going to give that right here, but it will be up on the notes, and I'm sure Jane will have it in her notes as well, because she's the best. All right. So that's FlashVote. So any questions, just let us know. We had a little bit of money that we had from savings in our consultant budget, so it was a really small ask this year to try it out. There's no commitment beyond that, and you can do up to six surveys a year. So we're excited about that. Schools this week, last day is Wednesday. It's a half day, so my house is pretty excited. I want to thank all our public school personnel for really another great year. This really felt like the first full year, you know, post-pandemic, that we had a pretty normal year, which was great for teachers and staff and for the kids. This is actually a particularly long summer this year. We're getting out on 6/14, Flag Day. But then we go back after Labor Day, so it's a particularly long summer for everybody, so I hope everyone can enjoy it. And the district will hold their annual Mullen Awards on Wednesday, recognizing teachers nominated by their peers, and that's always a great event as well. FY24 budget, it's the home stretch, everybody. I want to thank everyone for all their time putting into this. We have two more hearings to go this week. DPS tomorrow night, Water and Sewer, and then your deliberations will start on Thursday. Really, I just appreciate all the time that's been put into this. You know, we put a lot of time and thought into the budget, so I'm glad you're taking all the time that you need to really give it a full vetting. Looking forward to hearing how those deliberations go on Thursday, and then vote next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, so hopefully all your questions have been answered. You have Market Landing Park in your, as a late file tonight. I'm not going to go into too much detail here. That will get sent to committee, and I think we can really dig into it there, but long story short, you know, the bids came back higher than we expected. It was a really difficult decision for me to decide to send it back to you, but I thought the conversation should be had by a bigger audience than just me. It's a big decision, and so I look forward to having that conversation about reallocating that money for the culvert and the extra money from the waterfront parking fund to make up the difference. Like I said, we can talk more about that in committee. Streets and sidewalks are still going on across the city. DNR paving and allied for our sidewalks. So far, we've completed Streets, Peters Road, Ferrer Street, Fruit Street, Hoyt Lane, Longfellow Drive, and Crowsdale Road, Plummer Ave, and Christopher. I walked by them on the Flag Day 5K, and I assured them we're going to get to that street completed in the next couple of weeks. I know they've been waiting, so we're going to get to that, and then we're continuing the work on Noble Street, the kind of pre-work. We had a nice meeting with National Grid last week, looking about moving utility poles back to give us a little bit more room as we look for ways to make that street safer. So that process is ongoing. DPS Director Amaral and his team continue to work on tweaking that plan, and so we're going to submit that plan back to you, probably for the first and only meeting in July, so you can take a look at how Wayne's been able to put this together, combined with that other list that we're working on with traffic safety and sidewalks that are separate from the paving plan that we're rolling out. Also in the packet tonight is Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane, our hopefully new city solicitor. We had them in at General Government a couple of weeks ago now, I think, and it was great. Charis North will be the attorney assigned to us, and she came in, and she's already kind of hitting the ground running, meeting with a lot of department heads, had a great meeting in General Government, and I think it's just a great opportunity to work with someone new and have a fresh set of eyes on not only the charter, but everything else that we have going on here in the city. And lastly, Juneteenth is this Friday. We are moving it a little bit later in the day this year for the flag raisings. Hopefully, we can attract some more people on a Friday afternoon. We're doing it at 5:00 outside. Of course, I want to thank Tina Lowes and the DEI Alliance for all the hard work they're putting into it, but it should be another great event. And that's it for me.
I see Counsel McCauley's hand is up.
Thank you, Counsel President. If you hand me, I would, I have a question for the mayor regarding the topic of FlashVote. I know the details, you know, haven't been shared, and I'm sure, you know, you're working through those, but who exactly? I have three questions. I'll ask them and let you answer and let you answer, as you will, right? But who, it says the city will be designing the questions, but who exactly will be the city will be designing them? And what's the anticipated use of the survey results? And how do you, how do you reach out to older folks who might not be tech savvy along the way? A lot of this falls within the current view of what the City Council has in citizen advocacy. So just curious as to your comments on that. Thank you.
Sure. I mean, I think the administration, along with, you know, depending on what the departments, the questions might be involved in, will work on forming the questions. And as far as reaching different populations, I mean, that's why, you know, we're going to hopefully do a really great job rolling this out to different parts. We're already talking to the senior center about setting up some information sessions. Again, you can be tech savvy, or it can be on your phone. So, I mean, we're going to hopefully hold these sessions and get as many people as possible to, you know, to sign up for this. We can also utilize our outreach specialist at the senior center, who's regularly reaching out to some of these senior populations. And again, the idea is, I mean, we're just trying this out. So, I mean, we hope we get a good response. It would be nice to get, I mean, I think the other question was why, you know, what are we hoping to gain from this? It's really just to get a handle on some of maybe the bigger issues going on in the city that we don't get a lot of feedback from. I think we get a lot, a very small population of people who are really engaged and come to meetings, but I think we're missing out on, you know, hearing some feedback around any kind of any issue in the city that would affect residents and at City Hall. And I think this is a way just to get some information and, of course, share it with everybody and let us know what we found out. That's what we're thinking.
Thank you.
Counsel Khan.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification on timing for the Market Landing reallocation of funds. I know, I think in the memo or in the update, you said by June 30th to take advantage of grants, so I'm thinking our next meeting in terms of timing so that those who are paying attention can be part of the conversation. So is that the desire that we get that at our next meeting?
Sure. I mean, so this wasn't a great, you know, the timing's not great. We're just getting through a lot of budget and finance meetings. I don't know where exactly you decided to send this one, but if it was budget and finance, you'd probably have to sign.
No. It'll be the Market Landing Park.
Market Landing. Ad hoc? Okay.
So we'll pick a date.
So the thought would be the week after the vote, and then the following week would be your last meeting in June, so.
So we'll be able to meet that June 30th.
June 30th, definitely. Yeah. There's two grants, about $800,000, that we're in jeopardy of losing if we don't, you know, activate those contracts by the end of the month.
Got it. Okay. So for the, let's figure out a time before we leave tonight, and the public will know when we meet.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, answers? All right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Consent agenda.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for May 22nd. There are following communications. The first three are applications. First one is the Port Vida outdoor dining application to go to PWNS, that's Public Works and Safety. Next is the block party on Ting Street. Because of the time urgency, in other words, they want to have it June 16th, it's been pulled, and we'll address that in the regular agenda. The next application is the Greek Food Festival, July 28th through the 30th. That will go to license and permits. Then we have four communications. First one is the firefighters' fill-the-boot drive, August 3rd, 4th, and 5th, to go to PWNS. Memo regarding the city audit, FY 2022, to go to budget and finance. The appointment of the acting head librarian, Jessica Atherton, to go to community service. And then next is bike feasibility study, locations, estimates, march us hill bike path, concept plan and study, to go to CS. And the letter from Owen Smith regarding the tree warden, to go to PWNS. We have three transfers. Transfer 159, which is $15,000 to various places, harbor master assistant, harbor master, cashman park attendance, same amount. Transfer 160, police fuel and oil, $2,500, to office supplies, and police ammunition and weapons, $5,300, to building maintenance. Transfer 161, mayor's appraisal system, $7,000, and salaries of public health nurse, $10,000, goes to multiples, that's in total $17,000. The multiples are attached. Appointments, we have none. That leads us to community items, committee items that are coming out. Budget and finance, we have transfer 154, 155, 156, 157, and 158. Order 451, order 457. General Government, we have appointment 390 and appointment 406. License and permits, we have applications 140, 141. Public Works and Safety, we have appointments 399, 400, 404, 405. Communication 456. Orders 454, 458, and Communication 483. All those items will be coming out with the vote on the consent agenda.
Counsel Wallace.
I would like to.
Oh, hang on, Counsel Vogel. Counsel Wallace was recognized first.
I would like to remove Application 142, Communication 487, and Communication 491.
Application 4, you want to take them out of the consent agenda?
Take them out, yes.
Okay. Application 142, Communication 491, and?
487. Communication 487.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes. I was just going to ask for 142 to come out. Thank you.
Motion to approve as amended. Okay.
Roll call.
And can I add to that? Receiving filed mayor's update.
Very good.
Second. On that second.
Roll call of the amended.
Yes.
Okay. Approving as amended consent agenda and receiving filed mayor's update. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Since we've already received and filed the mayor's update.
There's no first reading of appointments. We would be down to communications. Shall we take them in order?
Yes.
We have four that came out. Application 142 is the Port Vida outdoor dining application.
Motion to refer to license and permits.
Point of order, I'm terribly sorry.
Yes, Counsel Vogel.
Is that 142, that, is that the?
Yes.
The Port Vida?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. Due to potential conflict of interest, I'm in a holder. I own property and a core space in that building. I need to refuse myself, please.
So noted. Thank you.
I see Counsel McCauley's hand.
Yes. I'll support how seconded it was, but I will support that, but I would also suggest that wherever we put Application 142, we also put Communication 192.
Yes. Agreed.
Yes. So right now, 492 is scheduled for PWNS.
Counsel Wallace. Thank you. As Chair of PWS, I was a little unclear on where these applications typically go. I know we've seen some of them come through to PWS, but in this particular case, most of it is not in the street. I'm open to discussion as to why it might go to PWS, and wherever it does go, the communication would go with it. I would agree with that.
I agree. It probably needs to go to license and permits.
So the motion on the floor right now is 142 to license and permits?
Yes.
So make a friendly amendment or suggestion to add 492 to that?
Yes.
Could we do a motion to reconsider, wouldn't we?
Well, we didn't really vote on sending those. We just.
We just, yeah, right. We didn't. No, we didn't do it by friendly. We didn't vote on it.
Second.
So the amendment was to add.
492 to license and permits also.
All right. I see Counsel Donahue has her hand up.
Yes. Before we continue, I wanted to respond to the board for Counselor and Chair of PWS. I would actually like to mention that, you know, because it does cross the public way, that's the only thing that kind of hangs me up on why it maybe should go to PWS, because it is crossing an open space public way.
Clerk Jones, is that the reason why it was sent in in the first place?
Yeah. You know, it's kind of a gray area. If you go back in time, it all used to go to public safety, right? And Counsel McCauley was there. I think that's, you know, all through the pandemic, and then we merged committees or changed committees. And so PWNS does have that streets portion, streets and sidewalks. That's what we were thinking in any event.
Counsel Wallace.
What, I thought for the last round, they went to license and permits and also to PWS as like a communication type. I'm not sure. I mean, this is kind of new territory if we've.
It is.
You know, changed.
It is. Probably good practice to keep sending all outdoor dining to the same location.
Counsel McCauley has his hand up. Counsel McCauley has his hand up? Counsel McCauley?
Sorry. I forgot to put it down. I need to hand it back.
Okay. So.
Right now, the motion on the floor is to send 142 to license and permits and 492 to license.
492 to license and permits.
Counselor Wallace?
So, we have to actually give them a permit, is that, it's an application for a permit? And if that's the case, it should, all right, it should go to license and permits, in my opinion. It could go to PWS as well as a communication, we can review it.
That's fine, okay.
I just wanted to make the point that it was, you know, crossing the public way, but that's, I'm not like high press for either way, so.
So right now, they're both, the motion is both to go to license and permits.
Correct. All right. Roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel is recused. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that leads us to the next application, which is 143, the Block Party on Ting Street, June 16th.
Motion on, I'm sorry, God.
I was in track. Emergency preamble, to approve.
And to waive the rules.
On first reading.
Did you make a motion?
Motion, yes.
Motion to.
Waive the rules.
Waive the rules and emergency preamble.
Do you want to approve it at the same time?
I want to play poker sometime, because you've got a good.
Yes, it's June 16th, so we have.
Yes.
So motion to waive the rules, gauge the emergency preamble and approve? Am I putting words in your mouth?
No, anyone want a second?
Yes, second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
All right, discussion. No discussion? All right, roll call.
Okay, this is for the mega motion on 143. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Back. Thank you, and Counselor Shan.
Yes.
All right.
That would lead us to communication 487, which is the boot drive, am I right?
Yes. Counselor Wallace.
I'll, I'll, motion to refer to license and permits, same, same question to everything.
Counselor Wallace.
Sure, so I just, this is a communication, so I wasn't sure how this, if something like a communication would even go to license and permits, or if it's just kind of notifying that they will be, you know, in the public way at that time. It could go either way for me, but I was just trying to stay consistent with. So, I welcome suggestions.
Counselor Vogel, do you have any questions on this one, if it goes to license and permits?
I finally got a license and permits, thank you.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, any other further discussion? Roll call.
So on sending, application 144, Greek Church Food Festival to license and permits, Counselor.
No, it's the firefighters' one.
I'm sorry, you're right. Communication 487.
Yes.
Better watch me tonight.
Communication 487.
What point were, what number are we talking about?
We're talking about communication 487, the firefighters' communication.
Yes, thank you.
To go to license and permits.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Does that lead us to communication 491?
Yes.
Which is the letter from Owen Smith regarding the tree warden.
Happy to put that in general government at the request of the person who wrote the letter.
Sure, motion to.
Second.
To refer to general government?
Second.
All right. All those, roll call.
Roll call on moving 491 to general government. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Is that anything?
I think it is.
Okay. All right, moving on to orders.
First order is 459, which is the opioid stabilization fund.
So I'd like to make a motion before you read them all, to take 459 through 467 collectively, all to go to budget and finance, with one exception, which is 460 to go to budget, finance, and committee of the whole.
Second.
So this would be a so-called mega motion to move orders 459 all the way to 467? If I get that right?
Yes.
With the addition on 460 to go, to be committee of the whole also.
Correct.
And that's by Counselor Zied, seconded by.
Counselor Preston.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just for the record, 461 through 466 are gift acceptances coming before business and finance from, from various entities.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Order 468 is the Wheeler Brader North Andover Contract.
Motion to send to community service.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
On sending 468 to community service, Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied, yes. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. That leads us to order 469, which is the handicap space at 12 Merrill Street.
Motion to refer to public works and safety.
Second.
Discussion.
Of course.
Counselor Wallace.
Just really quickly, this goes along with a communication that is in, that's supposed to be coming on the committee tonight, but we had to submit an order. And there was talk about if we would vote on it tonight or not, but I spoke with the sponsor, and we are going to be sending it to committee just to make sure we vet it, and we'll bring it back next time. Thank you.
Further discussion. Roll call on city, the public works and space safety.
Order 469. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
So now we have 470, so we're going to treat it the same as the other one.
We are, thank you for reminding me. So we are. 470, which is Market Landing Park gap funding.
Can we send that to the ad hoc on Market Landing Park?
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Donahue.
Do I make a committee of the whole?
Yes, always, committee of the whole. Counselor Zied.
Thank you. So it's a little bit out of the scope of the current ad hoc, but it's a weird situation, so I'm happy to support it. But I would like to ask that Sasaki be invited, and the city engineer, and anybody else who can answer how we missed the mark so terribly on this one again. I'd like to really investigate that and understand it. So I know we're on a short timeline, which is the only reason I stand up tonight to ask for that.
So that's a very good point, happy to invite all of them. I would ask folks to look at their calendars now, and are you all available Thursday, the 22nd? I'm just looking bookworm. So Thursday, the 22nd, probably at 5:45.
What was the form, sorry? Was there something else going on that night?
I've got general government at 5:30.
Oh, I see.
Which will only take 15 minutes.
I can do it.
Okay, you can do that? All right, Counselor McCauley, can you make that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Counselor Wallace.
I did put a placeholder to schedule a public works meeting, but I went from 4:00 to 5:30 thinking, so it'll just be a long night for, for everybody.
It will be.
What, what time were you thinking?
5:30. 5:30 for general government's already on the calendar, and then we can do this one at 5:45 or 6 o'clock, whatever we can get Sasaki and the engineer here for. So everyone that's in the audience tonight, we will be meeting the 22nd of June at 5:45 on the Market Landing Park expansion. All right? So.
Yeah, here.
So roll call on sending order 470 to the ad hoc on Market Landing Park.
And committee of the whole.
And committee of the whole.
Correct. Thank you. Counselor Wright?
Wallace.
I'm sorry, Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
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 Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Beautiful.
I will make sure that gets posted, so for those who are here tonight, that's where we're going to meet, I'll make sure it's posted on the city calendar as well, so you can find it. All right. So I think that's it for ordinances.
Orders.
Orders, so ordinances.
Ordinances, the first three are second readings. The first one is ordinance 150, amending municipal fees, street permits, and employee permits.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
No.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
I'm sorry, there was a, I didn't hear you, where are we voting for?
We are voting, this is the second reading, to amend the municipal fees on street permits and employee permits.
150, 150.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Three no, eight yes, motion passes. Ordinance 151, second reading, residential permits, amending chapter 13-18.
Motion to approve on second reading, second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Next would be second reading, ordinance 153, the anti-shuffling ordinance, amending chapter 13-166.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
amending chapter 13-166.
Motion approved on second reading.
Second. Roll call.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
No.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Sorry.
That would be a no.
That would be a no.
Okay. Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
No.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
No.
Council Vogel?
No.
Council Shan?
Yes.
On a close vote, 6 to 5, motion passes. That leads us to, um, the introduction of ordinance 156, which are parking restrictions on Fair Street.
Motion for to public works and safety?
Discussion. Roll call.
This is, um, 156 going to, um, public works and safety. Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you. Next ordinance coming in is 157, which is with respect to the public art policy.
Motion to refer to community services.
Second.
Discussion.
And committee of the whole?
I should, I'll take community.
Community service and committee of the whole, first and seconded.
All right. Roll call.
I'm sorry, where is it going?
Community services.
And committee of the whole. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, this vote is on 157. Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, committee items. Council Zede?
Motion approved transfer 154, DPS, snow and ice. Second. This is a free cash transfer in the amount of 253K, um, from the general fund and then also from snow and ice labor, both going to snow and ice expenses. Committee met on this, um, it's a somewhat standard transfer that we end up having to do most years. Unfortunately, while we didn't have a bad winter this year, costs were just exponentially higher than previous years, cost of contractors, cost of materials. Um, there are some contracts that are committed to early in the season in order to have that capacity to remove snow, whether the snow comes or not, you are committed to the contract. Um, we did ask if, um, we felt there would be any, any improvement perhaps to cost, um, moderating a little bit in the next year. Didn't seem there was a strong feeling that that would be occurring, so unfortunately, um, this is how we will be going forward. Um, I would just note in the budget this year, um, some, uh, expenses that were being paid out of snow and ice line have been reallocated to others, and we just talked about that last Thursday with the director of DPS, so, um, while there hasn't been a huge increase in that budget line, some expenses will come out of it, so it creates a little bit more slack. Doesn't mean we won't have to do the transfer next year, but, uh, does provide a little bit more to it. Last thing is, just a reminder that if you increase your snow and ice line, um, you can't just come back down on it. The state, um, asks you to keep it, uh, I think it's a 10-year rolling average over your past, uh, time, so you can't just go up and then come down, which is why CDs are often hesitant to do so. It was a 3-0 recommendation, um, to approve from committee.
Further discussion. Roll call.
Roll call on approving transfer 154. Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Thank you. Council?
Yes, sorry.
Got you. Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
So, uh, in an effort to try and reduce some votes, I'll do a motion collectively to approve transfer 155, 156, 157, and 158, and I'll talk you through each of them. So, um, transfer 155 is a health insurance. Again, it's a general fund, free cash transfer 61. Um, this really wasn't, um, a change in rates or anything like that, just the line ended up being a little bit under budgeted. I think there was an extra month consideration in there and so forth, so this basically covers the extra month. This extra month or this extra time was accounted for in next year's budget already. We did ask about that, so the committee did recommend, um, approval 3 to 0. Transfer 156 is the next one. Um, that's a transfer, it's, um, somewhat interdepartmental, it's fire dues and fees and emergency, uh, fire dues and memberships, pardon me, 1291, going in part to the emergency management coordinator and the emergency management deputy coordinator. This is a continuation of what we've been seeing recently where we had, uh, one person out on leave and another person assuming a position, so effectively we had to pay both at that rate. Um, now that that has sort of concluded, uh, hopefully this, uh, resolves the end of those transfers there, so, um, the committee voted, uh, there, 3 to 0 as well, to approve. The next one is transfer 157. It's again an interdepartmental transfer, police fuel and oil and police miscellaneous supplies, adding up to a total of 10K, uh, plus a little bit more from, um, MIS and communications, 2K, sorry, a total of 12, going to police maintenance. Um, you probably remember, unfortunately, the generator, uh, sort of went kaput down at the police station early on in the fiscal year, and what they did was they covered that emergency work to get the generator back online out of the, out of these lines, causing them to go into a deficit, and now as we come to the end of the fiscal year, they're looking to bring that back in line, and were able to do so by taking money from other areas. Um, the last thing that we have is, um, is the library, uh, purchase of books, uh, so it's a kind of a couple lines again. Libraries, uh, salary of the librarian, 7K, salaries of staff, 13K, um, and then transferring to purchase of books and heat and electricity. Um, the total amount of the transfers is $20,000. And so, we had a kind of a, uh, somewhat of a longer conversation on this one. There's a lot going on, but they were getting credits for net metering, then they weren't getting credits for net metering, so they had to come back. The salary of the librarian is lower because there was a vacancy and that position was filled, and National Grid makes the allocation of these credits, um, very hard, and so, um, you know, basically, at the end of all this conversation, they got a little bit aggressive on purchasing, and they went over, overshot the budget by a little bit, and they're looking to bring it back in line here. Um, despite that, the committee still recommended 3-0 approval, it wasn't deemed to be that much money, um, so that was the answer on that. So, I believe that's all of the ones in this motion, this, the four, four-way, 155, 6, 7, and 8.
Thank you, Council Zede. Discussion. Questions? Roll call.
Roll call on transfers, uh, collectively, 155, 156, 157, 158. Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Next is a motion approved order 451, peg center gift acceptance. Second. This is a gift order, um, the gift is in the amount of $2,000. As you can see, it was for five trees along the Clipper City Rail Trail, um, as is typical with tree gifts or tree expenditures, this does include the planting and, and a couple of years of watering is what we were told. Um, we did have a conversation about sort of what the genesis of the gift was, was this the Parks Commission sort of, they had identified a need for trees and then were seeking funds for that purpose. Um, the answer was, um, not really, this was more of a community-driven effort, so that they decided, the gift giver decided that this would be a nice place for trees and there may be some other connection there, and so, uh, did donate this, and, um, the trees have already been purchased and installed, so it already exists. That's something I think we continue to work on, is getting the gifts in advance of their actual expenditure, um, but in the end, um, it was 3 to 0 to accept the gift.
Thank you, Council Zede. Council Khan?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Council President. I, I, I mean, the Chair did a good job, but I, I do want to rise in just recognition that there are these processes where we are accepting gifts and things like this with, with the trees and a party feels like, and I think I did ask administration, but it would be nice to know or have approvals of like, the tree commission, for example. It'd be nice to know in terms of things that affect other commissions, where there are bodies that look holistically at the city, so it was just something I wanted to share that we also ask administration to be considered when we accept gifts. I mean, I'm grateful for gifts, but sometimes you want to make sure we're mindful, um, if it's needed and, you know, who really drives, uh, the decision for where and when something is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Khan. Further discussion. All right, roll call.
Point of view?
So. Sorry, Council McCauley?
Yeah, I, I would like to concur with the at-large counselor that I would like to see, uh, as we continue on these, that things are less community-driven and driven by the needs of the departments, right, uh, Friends of Trees, uh, the Tree Commission, uh, Parks Commission, all of that. Um, we can create a slippery slope, um, of having some things that maybe are unwanted, uh, because they're, um, community-driven in a long way, and that, uh, we should be cognizant of that, and as we move forward and evolve our, our policies, I think it would be helpful to have a need and then a net need going forward as opposed to, um, you know, saying, uh, we think this is a good idea and we should install it. So, uh, I just wanted to add my two cents. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Council McCauley. Thank you. Further discussion. Roll call.
Improving order 451. Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Last item is, uh, motion to approve order 457, revolving fund spending limits. Second. So we just did a, uh, a recent one of these, just to get us to the end of the fiscal year for a couple of departments that were butting up against the revolving limit. This order is now setting them for the next fiscal year, so these, these would be effective from July 1 until the following June 30th. Um, so the changes that we recently made, um, were incorporated into here, and then some of them really didn't, didn't change. So the change you're seeing is, you know, what was sort of, um, from the change, the change to the change, and we do do this every year, even though we don't need to, no longer need to redefine each revolving fund. There was an amendment in committee, um, it doesn't look like it made it into the packet, but we did, um, in committee by a vote of 3 to 0 amend the rec services spending limit from 600 back to 550. Um, it was proposed to go to 600 in here, that was a 3-0 voting committee, and then it came out, 3 to 0 to recommend it with that amendment, so I apologize, it's not in the packet. But that's, um, that's what's coming out tonight. In terms of that line specifically, the discussion centered around, the request that was made because of adult rec potentially being out there and driving a few more expenses, the counterbalance to that was, we don't really know how much that is yet or kind of what that looks like, and I, I just would remind you that, um, a spending limit doesn't, it doesn't mean that that's the end of the road, it just means beyond that, the options would either be to come in for an order as we just did, to increase the spending limit, say for the remainder of the fiscal year, or to simply request an authorization to appropriate the fund, so it doesn't mean that the credit card is, is done once that limit is hit, just means there's a little bit more process if they want to go over that. Since this is early in the, this will be at the beginning of the fiscal year, they're starting at zero, so there'd be a lot of runway. So that was the discussion. Uh, we really didn't talk too much about many of the other lines, they're all fairly straightforward at this point, um, but if anybody has a question. One, one last thing that's interesting is that we did have a conversation about, um, you know, just how, what's typical for revolving fund maximum limits, and I guess, I didn't know this, but I learned that before the Mass Municipal Modernization Act, it was 1% of the tax levy was considered the absolute max, uh, revolving fund, the Mass Municipal Modernization Act eliminated any statutory cap at the state level, so cities are, are welcome to set that at whatever they are comfortable doing so. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Council Zede. Discussion, questions?
Just for clarification, my President?
Yes.
So it's a motion approved with the amendment of, of rolling back adult rec from 600 to 550?
Yeah, just not adult rec, it's recreational services, the second row in the list of revolving funds, so essentially the change becomes zero. There's no change. It's 550 to 550.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call. Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that's it for business tonight. Um, I just, I, I sent you all an email earlier about budget this week, um, home stretch. The thing I really just wanted to highlight is that, um, it really is a whole new thing this year, everything is different, but the water sewer rates are really important, and so, um, it was, I don't know, somewhat a confluence of events, but they came in tonight, they went to budget, and so they're, they're going to be discussed tomorrow night, and I'll provide more information then, but I just wanted to highlight that if you could kindly prepare a little more on those and be ready. There is also an associated, um, transfer, particularly in sewer, for clarifier upgrades, it's quite large, so I mean, typically the debate around rates centers around utilizing retained earnings or, or what, what they call retained earnings, which is essentially free cash for the enterprise fund to soften rate increases. So I just trying to orient everybody so tomorrow we can be as productive as possible because we do have to kick the rates out on June 26th. And then final thing is, um, budget, um, thanks to my colleagues, we, we added a meeting on Wednesday, just because we have, we're backed up with stuff that has to come out before the fiscal year, so I'm just letting everybody know if they're interested. That's it for budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Zede. Community services. Council McCauley?
Uh, Chair, there's nothing, uh, Council President, there's nothing from the Chair to, thank you.
Thank you, Council McCauley. So general government, we have two, so, motion to approve appointment 390, Caitlin Hare to the Board of Registars. Second. Thank you. Uh, so Ms. Hare came in for her public hearing last week, she spoke about her nudist to the city and wanted to be part of some of the commissions and thought that, uh, the Board of Registars spoke to her as she is most wanting to, I think the right word to put it was, uh, keep democracy safe, and she thought this, being part of the vote was part of doing that, so the committee voted 3 to 0 to approve Ms. Hare to the Board of Registars. Discussion. Roll call.
Roll call on appointment 390. Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunne?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve appointment 406, Murphy Hess, Tumi Lehane to be our city solicitor. Second. So, uh, as, uh, the mayor stated, we had at general government this past week, Ms. North, Karis North, would be our focal for, from, uh, Murphy Hess, Tumi, and Lehane. Uh, she spoke about the, the firm being around for 40 years, how they have numerous people, similar to how, uh, we are serviced with KP, they have various folks, uh, they have labor provokes, legal services, uh, same type of coverage we have through zoning, land use attorneys, uh, very good questions are asked, uh, some coming from Council Khan regarding zoning ordinances, how do they handle, uh, training? Similar, uh, questions on, um, I think the best one was, do you represent the city council or the mayor, and she stated that she represents the city, so, good answer there. She, uh, said that they had been doing a lot of work on short-term rental units, I told her that we were going to have that coming up sooner rather than later, so we would have her engaged soon. Uh, we had a question from, uh, Counselor Khan, again, on what are the communities do they represent? They mainly represent many towns, they do represent the city of Attleboro, and they do do specific work in Beverly on, um, another city on labor issues, so, the other public comment was regarding training sessions, and, uh, Ms. North does do training sessions similar to KP, and they also send out emails regarding changes to, uh, state statutes and SJC rulings, so, similar services that we have with KP. I think Council Lane stood up when he said he was looking forward to having a new perspective on things, and I think the committee agreed, so we voted 3 to 0 to approve the firm, and just so you know, the city solicitor is only two floors up from the other attorney, which is the school attorney, and that's not the same Murphy, if anybody was wondering. So, questions? Council Zede?
Um, first, I apologize, I could not make that general government meeting. My question, I guess, is, um, for ongoing matters, um, and I don't know if this came up in the committee, but, and, and maybe the clerk could help, but do we envision, like, making special appointments to continue? Because we, we need to, in other words, like, if we name this as the city solicitor, we need to still have authorization for the old one, not, not a verbal, it's okay, keep we need to still have authorization for the old one, not a verbal, it's okay, keep going, but a formal legal authorization that they still represent us, or are there any of the cases we intend to transfer in?
Answer that, just because we did ask KP that, and Clerk Jones, you can speak up too. But when we asked KP if they weren't going to be followed, if they weren't going to be appointed after June, how would that work? And they said they would still be supporting the cases they have, and they would also be part of the file transfer with Ms. North. So.
Okay.
They would continue supporting them. That was back then.
But do we need any paper? Do we need paper behind that to authorize them to stay on certain cases as our?
Clerk Jones, I'll look.
Well, it depends on what the city wants to do. If the city wants, like, if you've switched attorneys in the middle of a lawsuit, you might like that, might not want that.
Right.
If we have some outstanding litigation matters that we want them to continue with because we're nine-tenths of the way through, wouldn't be smart to switch over to Murphy, I don't think. But it would be, I think, a joint decision between the city council and the mayor.
Yeah, just to put a sharper point on, I'm not, I'm not asking about what we should switch or not. I'm just saying, do we need order appointing them as special counsel for certain items that we do choose to continue with them on? That's all I want to know. Not, not to debate which ones we should or shouldn't, because I agree, there are, of course, some that make no sense to do so. But just to ensure they have continual proper authorization to act on our behalf, to speak on our behalf.
Please go, Ray.
I'll just say that I don't know of anything in the ordinance dictating city solicitor that says anything about that, but I think it's a fair question. And we're in the funny position of, I guess, we need to ask our city solicitor about if we need to do that. But we'll see what their opinion on that is. But I, I think it's worth asking the question. I'm not aware of anything that's, that would bind us to do so from our side, but we should find out and check state law as well.
And the other discussion that we had was, we still can go back to various people within KP. If we wanted to go to Lauren Goldberg for elections, which is something that the clerk brought up, we can still do that. So, just so you know, Counsel Zied, then Counsel Khan.
I just want to ask one up. So, thank you, and if there are any orders, then I'm guessing we'd see them come through. My other question was just on finance or budgetary impact. You know, was that discussed at all in terms of?
Counsel.
Their rates were comparable.
Okay.
So, we have not changed our budget ask for the next year.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set. I yield.
Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just to add on to that, I think I just am asking the administration to, it's not about whether or not we could continue to use KP law, but if we should on some of these matters. So, that's all I ask. With that lens, if it's worth keeping KP law, we like how they've done. And that's the administration's role somewhat, because you guys are handling these matters that I know are ongoing, that we're not there with the day-to-day. But I just want to encourage that we look and see, if it's worth keeping KP, we do. If not, it's worth looking at this. The resume is here too. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Further questions or discussion? All right, roll call.
So, on appointing Murphy Hess, Appointment 406, Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes. So, that's it for things coming out of General Government tonight. I will say that since next Monday is a holiday, we will be leading on June 22nd for the one item, which is going to be the appointment of Stephen Wallace to the Waterfront Trust. And then, after that, we'll have the market landing part discussion. So, that's it for General Government. Moving on to license and permits. Counsel Vogel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve collectively both Applications 140 and 141.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So, 141, the block party after the bed race, there was discussion, both of these came out of committee, three to nothing in favor of recommendation for appointing to the council. There was some conversation around the block party with regard to the bed race and so on and so forth. I made some, I asked around and made a couple of calls. I had got no clarity on whether there was an issue with this block party going on. So, whoever had those concerns, nobody, I wasn't able to confirm or deny that there were concerns about this. As you can see, this is the sixth year that they've done it. Both of these block parties are well-established and have, you know, a history of no issues.
I see Counsel.
My fellow counselors wish, want to add to that, feel free.
Counsel Lane, I see your hands up. You want to unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. If you could, I have a question I want to make. I honestly think I had confusion with what the gentleman said about the road race itself and moving the route, how they just didn't want people to congregate on certain points of that route. So, I think that's what I was talking about. But for what I mean, I couldn't find anything either when asked around. So, yeah, I had no issues at all.
Thank you.
Did you clear my head for me?
Further, Counsel Preston.
I can just add, as a former resident of Temple Street and someone who has attended this block party, this has definitely been going on for many, many years. And I've never been aware of any, frankly, everyone from the neighborhood is there at that party. So, I can't imagine there would be a problem.
Further discussion. I can attest to the Dove Street party. That's been going on for quite a while too, and it's also a very good time. So. All right, seeing the hands or comments. Counsel Lane, do you have your hand up still?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's not that I had an issue with the event itself. It's that I just had to remember again what about previous committee, because there was mention of not congregate somewhere. So, I was just, I remember it was given myself, and I truly enjoyed it. So, I'm all for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Lane. Counsel Zied.
I just, I just have two things. One is just a suggestion. At the top, I just, I've been meaning to say this and I keep forgetting, but where it says that it should be submitted at least eight days before a city council meeting, might be worth changing that to, like, thirty days. Because it says down at the bottom in the big, long block of text, you know, may take four weeks to process. But to me, that seems to tell a resident that we can turn a permit around in eight days, which unfortunately really can't. And then the second thing is just, I'm not going to oppose or anything, but just, should the applicant be the person who lives there? You know, here you have a person applying, and then you have a different person who owns the property. So, as long as the person applying is taking responsibility, I guess it's okay. But that's just something to think about in the future, because that implies that you could hold the block party on the other side of town, which I don't think is what the intent is. So, just something for consideration on both.
Thank you, Counsel Zied. Further discussion. All right, roll call.
I just, I can't wait for the block party to wash.
Thank you, Counsel Lane. All right, roll call.
So, approving 140, 141. Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counsel Vogel?
Let me go.
Thank you. Counsel Cameron.
Nothing to report, but we will be scheduling, kind of, look at short-term rentals, get out of our project and come off.
Okay. All right, Public Works and Safety, Counsel Ross.
All right. Motion to approve Appointment 399, Rector to Assistant Harbor Master for Shellfish Constable and Special Police Officer. All right. So, Mr. Carrier came in and spoke with our committee a couple of weeks ago. He is a member of the U.S. Coast Guard, law enforcement officer. He spent four years on the Merrimack River so far. He's an avid jet skier, and also works in the town of Newberry. And as Assistant Harbor Master, he said he is very readily on call and works closely with Harbor Master Paul Hogg, of which Harbor Master Paul Hogg spoke very highly of him and recommended him to this position. And the committee voted two, zero, with one absent.
All right. Further discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve Appointment 400, Robert Dow.
Second.
Reappointment to the Harbor Commission.
Second.
All right. Mr. Dow has been on the commission for thirty years. He was, he first joined in 1992. We had three of them come in at the same time, and it's very clear that it's a good group of people that work together. They're excited about what they do. They claim that they're, they're, they don't tend to be political. They just try to focus and get the job done. And they all kind of seem to be on the same page. He grew up in Newberry, Florida. He's been on the water all his life. As far as what he would like to see in the future, he'd like to see the commercial fishing pier finished. And also, they have a long-term harbor master plan, which is apparently very lengthy. But what they try to do is kind of prioritize two projects, you know, so that they don't get overwhelmed with too many projects. But they don't, they just kind of agree on two projects they're going to focus on, do those really well, and then they'll do the other projects at a later time. And he was also very involved with the Coast Guard city certification. And committee voted two, zero, to approve with one absent.
All right. Discussion. Roll call.
Appointment 400, Robert Dow. Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve Appointment 404, James Knapp, as a reappointment to the Harbor.
Second.
All right. Jamie Knapp has been on the commission for sixteen years. He joined in February '08. He grew up in Amesbury and spent a lot of time on the water. His professional background is in international trade and domestic transportation, so there's some overlap there. In terms of things that he's seen in his time, the, they have a new reservation system, and they said that's working very, very well, the automatic reservation system, and even more technology with some tablets on the boats. And, you know, they're getting, getting up to the new millennium, I guess. And that's been working out really, really well. And again, he's interested in implementing the harbor plan, and he also mentioned, look at the top two projects, focus on those. And when they have those in place, then move, move ahead. Committee voted to approve, two to zero, with one absent.
Thank you. Discussion. Roll call.
Appointment 404, Jamie Knapp. Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve Appointment 405, Ron Thurlow, for reappointment to the Harbor Commission.
Second.
So, Ron has been on for four years. He is a former Air Force captain, and also was involved in the Coast Guard recertification. He has a little bit different perspective. He's an avid kayaker, and was pointing out that there's actually a lot of near misses with kayaks, and kayakers getting stuck under docks and things like that. So, he's set up training, teaches courses. I think he's mapped out the river and knows exactly when and where it's safe for kayakers. So, it's really, really interesting. And I told him that my seventh-grade son happened to go on a kayak trip for four hours. He said, oh, yeah, I helped, you know, set that up. So, it's through Plum Island Kayak. They can, they can do all that. So, he's big on public access and safety and making sure everybody shares the water and stays safe. And he would like to see standards on docks and moorings come into place as a future project. Committee voted three, two, zero, to approve.
All right. Discussion. Roll call.
145, Ron Thurlow. Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to receive and file Communication 456, Letters Regarding Curb Cut at 4 Wilkinson Drive and 34 Hale Street.
Second.
There's some feedback comments from residents in Ward Five who had concerns about a curb cut that went in on Wilkerson, which is, it's at Wilkerson and the corner of Hale Street. Apparently, there was some confusion or lack of communication with the previous DPS director and the location of the curb cut. So, the Ward Counsel, the Counsel from Ward Five and the new DPS director met with the residents, and they came up with a solution to help put the residents at ease and make it a little bit safer. This was, oh, this wasn't sponsored, but I will defer to Counsel from Ward Five if he has any further comments. But the committee voted two, zero, to receive and file with one absent.
Counsel McCauley, I see your hands up.
Yes, thank you. I do not have anything to add. Thank you.
All right. Further discussion. All right. Roll call on receiving and filing.
456, Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Order 454, Story Avenue Bike Lane.
Second.
This is sponsored by Ward Five Counsel McCauley. It is a proposal for Mast dot to stripe a bike lane from 113 at Story Avenue, or kind of around the corner where it connects into the bike lane on High Street in the eastbound direction. I believe Mast dot will be striping fairly soon, so we wanted to make sure that we connect with them, and so that's fine. The one thing is it, for now, it's only on the eastbound side, and it's not on the westbound side, because there's conflicts with the three roads. But once we start working on the three roads project, make sure we can get bike lanes in there. So, it, committee voted two to zero to approve with one absent. And I'll defer to the sponsor or to the chief of staff if any questions.
Counsel McCauley.
Thank you, Counsel President. No, again, I think you should have covered it. I think this is an opportunity for us to begin to mark out the road, bring a little bit of safety to that corner. To start, as was mentioned, around Keller Drive, go around the corner. It is, it is an area where cars start to merge from two lanes to one. They should be in one lane by now. And because of that, it creates some safety issues for anybody who may be on a bike, if that's a technical complication. So, beginning there and going around will actually provide some safety during the runway at the time. And I think it's an opportunity for us to take a initial, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Further discussion. Counsel Zied.
First thing, I just want to ask a quick question. So, this, this is actually do this. This isn't to just authorize Mast dot in the future. They're, they're going to go and stripe this. And so, if we don't approve this, they're just going to stop, and there's going to be a hole between where it ends, the city road ends, and where the state, and then around the corner. Is that correct? Is that what the pink and the blue mean?
I will defer to you.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Okay. And so, I guess my question is, around the bend where you're going by three roads, so this, this will kind of just float in there, right? Because there's, that's just a big, open expanse. So, you come, you come to the end, the bike lane just stops, and then this will just continue around, and then they're going to go up Story Ave until they hit Keller, and then it's just going to stop, right? That's the termination point?
Right, that's, that's the idea, is we're heading east. This, this is the area, so the area that we're talking about is on the, the city-owned area. It would be in between the current bike lane that exists and this area that, that they can do the striping and the bike lane on.
It's two white lines, like, whatever the width of a bike lane is.
Yep.
Around that corner.
Yep, around that corner.
Okay. With no dashes in it, it's just a solid line all, all the way around?
My understanding is it's a solid line.
Okay, got it. Okay, yeah. So, I guess, so thank you. I just want to make sure I'm just saying, because due respect to Mast dot, I wasn't confident after the bridge. I just don't know what, what they're up to. So, I guess what I want to say is just, in terms of a broader theme here, I, I cycle, like, you know, three to five times a week, and actually, this is one of my routes that I go, and then I go down out by, down, down towards Coeur d'Alene, and then out through the, the park there. So, my only comment is just that, you know, as, as an avid cyclist, there, there do need to be some places for cars. And that, that's kind of this balancing thing. And my, my concern about this is, this is a really good idea, actually, because this corner has, actually, for cars, has no definition. There's never been a line that just arcs. So, you always see people kind of like, should I go right, or is, which way does the road go? But going down Story Ave, I just worry about where it ends, and then is the idea to keep going? Do we really want to send bikes down towards, say, the very commercial area of Market Basket and beyond? So, I support this. The pink is the part that I think is probably the most important. But I just want to say that, just something that I think we probably need to have, continue to have conversations on with Route One, and this area, and commerce, and sort of how does everything fit together? That's all. Thank you.
Counsel McCauley, I see your hand up.
Hi, thank you, Counsel President. And just a point of maybe clarification. This paint will be coming from, you'll be traveling eastbound, you'll be coming from Market Basket, going around the corner by the old, old man's home. So, it's actually going to be in an area, yes, it will define women are around the way, and where, for those people who venture to Market Basket, there is a sidewalk that you can get on right in front of Keller Drive to be able to go into the Market Basket parking lot. Coming out of that, the sidewalk elevates itself, and it's a little narrower, it's a little less dangerous. It's a little bit more dangerous for both pedestrians and bikers. Again, not ideal, but it comes around, and the way the Merrimack, excuse me, the High Street, street was paved, the bike lane is very close to the curb on that side of the street, so it shouldn't impact any flow of traffic on the road. So, I hope that clarifies. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Counsel Wallace.
I just want to say that I, too, support this. I wish there could be a lane on the other side, but I understand the constraints. But to the, the Counsel from Ward Two's point, paint even can help. So, in addition to this bike lane, perhaps in the future, you know, we could look at, you know, putting in some sort of lanes, at least on a temporary basis, as the three roads, just to help direct cars, because they are just going through a big, wide piece of pavement. So. And I also just wanted to say that, you know, even though there was kind of a, a miscommunication for the Route One Bridge, I think in this case, the communication with Mast dot has been really good. They, they responded to the local streets letter very thoroughly. And I think as a result of the, the Route One Bridge, those, those partnerships are going to get stronger. A new DPS director, and again, I always say this, but we can use the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. They have a lot of contacts at Mast dot, and they're great at scheduling meetings and putting that communication together. So, I think, I think this is great, and hopefully, it's going to continue and improve the communication with the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Further discussion. All right. Roll call on Order 454.
454, Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Order 458, Hale Street Resolution.
Second.
This is sponsored by Counsel from Ward Five, Counsel McCauley. And it states the history and the needs for safety on Hale Street, and it requests the administration allocate the $130,000 for the next step in the design for Hale Street. The committee voted two, zero, to approve, and one was absent. But I'm going to defer to the sponsor at this point, and he can explain or read it, or however he wants to proceed.
Counsel McCauley. Counsel McCauley.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Counsel President. My request here is, is a continuation of work that we've been doing on Hale Street for some time. In the last budget, we were able to get some money to have a right-of-way wetland study done. It was flagged, you might have seen, if you were down that way, you might have seen paint ribbons all over the place along the way. This would be the next step along the way. This is by no means a, a solution, but the idea from the bidding vendors, as you have heard from public comment, would be that the outside vendor can do a lot of the background work and detailed work with some of the permitting requirements that would be needed, and then would come back to the city in roughly, you know, eight to 12 months or so, with the idea that we would have designs that we could then go get funding for from the state or federal grants that are out there. We think this is a priority, you know, in the ward, we think it's a priority. We have kids that cannot participate, arriving at bike, you know, participate in bike schools. You know, we can, we can label a number of things. This is a green initiative. This is a social disadvantage to these kids that are out there, et cetera, along the way. But it is really a safety issue, and it is a safe route to school issue, and all of those types of things, and I would hate for us to lose the momentum that we've been able to gain simply for the sake of between $100,000 and $130,000. So I ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Counsel Khan, then Counsel Wallace.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I'm definitely going to stand up and support this, as I think many of us will, but I do want to acknowledge and, first of all, thank you, thank the Ward Counselor, Counselor from Ward 5. This is something that in 2018, my first year of serving on the city council, part of the IMW project at the Knox Middle School, the eighth graders, when I said, if there's anything you could get done in the city, what would you like? And this was something they asked for, and I remember at that point, you know, saying, that's a great, great, you know, let's, let's do it. And it's always sad, we saw them graduate from high school, by the way, this class in eighth grade. So it's, it's sad that it takes a long time, but I really do commend the Ward 5 Counsel for bringing it up, knowing that there's been efforts in place. And I do think going through COVID did kind of slow the process down. So in terms of, you know, we're not saying where the money's coming from, we know we also have some left over from the ARPA funds, you know, there is money that could be spent. And I know this was one of the projects, too. If folks remember, I think Director Port mentioned a list of priority projects, and so I really do feel the funding can be there to have this done, and I'm going to be completely in support, as I think most people here will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Counsel Wallace, then Counsel Cameron.
Sure, I just want to say I also support this. This, I believe, is probably equivalent to about the 75% design, so this is a critical piece where the engineers will actually cut cross-sections and do alignments, and what you'll get, because they've already done the survey, from what I understand. So they run these programs, and what you'll get is you'll see exactly where the impacts are going to be, and so we'll know what are the wetland impacts, what different types of cross-sections could we use, and they'll be able to get a better sense of cost. And I also think it's critical, because consultants right now are not the easiest to come by, and I think this sounds like a very fair price. I would say you want to jump on it before you might have to rebid it again, a year or two out, or whenever. Roadway projects like this take a long time, and it would be a loss if you don't take advantage of this. And again, working with MVPC and any of our partners, you know, we can take the time to look at potential funding. You know, maybe this could get on the state funding tip plan for, you know, seven to 10 years from now, but it's critical that you start now, because these roadway projects do take a long time. And it sounds like, like the data center costs may have gone down, so perhaps there's some ARPA funding for something like this. And this is a safety project that's not in Ward 4 that I completely am in support of.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Counsel Cameron.
Thank you. Yeah, just to belabor the point, I can go back even further than Counsel, yeah, Arch Counselor, just, I mean, this has been talked about since 2007, and it's heated up a little bit from time to time, and then it goes away, and this is a real opportunity to move it forward. So I applaud the Ward 5 Counselor for pulling this together. And that sounds great, and it really is, it's all about connectivity, and similar to the Story Ave discussion about the bike lane and making it easier for, you know, eventually for people to be able to either walk or bike along that route, which is extremely treacherous, I would say right now. I mean, Gulf Street, you know, I've walked it, and I've biked it a number of times, and you tend to go very fast, because you don't want to be hanging out on that street, it's so narrow. And I think this will be a great, a great initiative, and, you know, I don't anticipate that this is going to be like a rail trail, but any, any sort of, of a next step to have a shared-use pathway is kind of really open up, you know, both for people that live more in downtown, typically settled areas to get out there, because there really is a lot to see out there, but also for the, for the folks that, you know, tricking over it, et cetera, to come in, rather than their car, I think would be great, so really looking forward to seeing this happen.
Thank you, Counsel Cameron. Further discussion. Counsel Vogel, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Just as did, to what everybody else has said, I remember conversations about this since I've been in this community since 1992, so way to go. My dear question, we are, we are requesting that the administration allocate, so that allocation then comes back to us? Is that how this works?
Depending on the source of funds.
Yep. So Counsel Z just said, depending on the source of funds, yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Counsel Wallace.
Just to clarify, I believe it's not, it's just a resolution, it's not binding, but it's a vote to tell the administration that as a council, we feel very strongly about this, so if you can find some funding, we would be more than willing to approve it.
Okay. Further questions? Roll call.
Hill Street Resolution. Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Elaine.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
All right. I may need some help on this, Coach John. This item, Communication 483, is going to go back to committee with the order that came in earlier. Do I need a motion for that? Or, yes, okay. So motion to refer Communication 483 back to Public Works and Safety.
Discussion.
I'll just say that there was just some kind of administrative questions that we had, and I think we've got it figured out with the clerk, and it just will be good to have this communication with the order. So when we bring it back, it's going to be all one package. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is to refer back to Public Works and Safety, Communication 433, first and second.
Yes, roll call.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Elaine.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Just a couple of updates. We have a lot in our committee. It's a busy committee, especially in the beginning of construction season, and also with the new DPS Director that has delayed us a little bit because he's getting up to speed, and there's going to be some tweaks and things. So there's a lot of roadway items in, in committee, but that will come out.
Sorry, can you all, I'm sorry. Counsel Donahue, you can't hear when you have other conversations going on. Thank you. Counsel Wallace.
So a lot of the roadway items in our committee, once we get that new updated street and sidewalks plan, then we'll have probably a couple of, you know, just roadway meetings. The other item that I'd like to have a singular meeting on is on water quality and the new PFAS regulations that are going to be in tomorrow morning at the budget talks. We're going to hear from the water department, so we might get a little sense of where they are with that. So our next meeting is scheduled for the 22nd, so that's Thursday next week. I know everybody, we had to wait until all the budget stuff is over. Tended to leave from 4:00 to 5:30. It may not need to be known half, but I will adjust as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Good to be ordered.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Roll call.
On the motion to adjourn, Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Elaine.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.